Now we will move on to our next agenda item. And that is an informational hearing with the University of Guam. And we will receive updates from the university on student scholarships, student assistant, federal student aid, campus safety and health, and college affordability initiatives. I'd like to turn it over to the president of the University of Guam, Dr. Christ. You are recognized.
It's Massey, Madam Chair, Honorable Senator, delighted to be able to offer this update on a number of different issues at the university. And so I will have this short slideshow presentation just to run through them and then happy to take questions afterwards. If that's all right. So thank you very much for this opportunity to provide these updates and information on how the University of Guam has supported students this fiscal year and throughout the pandemic through scholarships, student financial assistance programs, federal student aid, and we'll also give some updates here on campus safety and health. Our entire university community has shown tremendous resiliency, especially our students and faculty during the pandemic. In fact, throughout this pandemic, our focus on supporting student success has resulted in higher retention rates and graduation rates and in high academic achievements. So we've had several graduations recently that have been record setting for the number of graduates. And we've moved our graduation rate from the percentages in the 20s to percentages in the 40s. It's a tremendous improvement and worth taking note of. So on the COVID health and safety front, this academic year, UOG restarted in-person classes with requirements that all students and employees be fully vaccinated or have an approved accommodation to work and attend classes on campus. UOG has maintained mask masking, social distancing and sanitation protocols. And we've limited in-person gatherings and particularly anything that would involve an unmasked situation, which is typically eating and drinking. So we think that our success has been largely due to the sort of perpetual masking in face-to-face environments. And so all employees and students have been required to be fully vaccinated. I said that, sorry, our employees and students receive periodic updates to any changes in our campus guidelines, the DPHSS guidelines, and of course, the governor's executive orders. Since the beginning of the public health emergency in March of 2020, our campus has had only 25 reported cases of on-campus transmission as of this past month, despite the Delta and Omicron surges. And I think that's a real testament to how hard our community has worked to contain this and to follow the guidelines. So we also have a dashboard. And so we have here some websites there that you can go to look at the dashboard. You can track, we show, you know, over time, how the transmission has happened. And I think the emphasis should be on how little transmission there's been on campus and how proud I am of our students and employees, particularly our students and residents in the dorms have done a tremendous job to contain the virus and do adhere to the guidelines. So I think, and so you can follow through with the website for tracking all of those kinds of things. So that's it on the health and safety update. And now we'll move on to scholarships, student financial aid and federal financial aid. So our local and regional financial aid, and this is, these are, we're trying to give you updates to the minute. So this is really for the FANETSAHAN in the fall semester of 2021. And so we show here that we have $896,000 in regional and private scholarships to a total of 232, sorry, to 326 students. And then we have of that, that's 278,000 in regional scholarships to 130 students, 551,000 in other private scholarships to 164 students. And some of those are direct, you know, when companies or organizations give a direct scholarship support to a student, that's what we're talking about in terms of the private scholarships. And then we have 67,000 in UOG Endowment Foundation scholarships. These are typically endowed scholarships where the proceeds of the investments are supporting 32 students. And then we have the Regent scholarships. And so the UOG is committed to funding the Regent scholarships. And we've awarded $369,3000 to 205 students. Now moving on to our student financial aid budget. The student financial aid budget, I hope, is next. There we go. So we have a pie chart here to show the mix of programs. So we've got, this is the fiscal year 22 budget, the current budget year. 1.8 million of 4 million of student financial aid program dollars were awarded to 607 students in the fall semester. The concentration is on health professionals, training awards, and the reopening of the PROTEC awards. And the application periods are both open currently in this semester. So those have been reopened, thanks to the, to the funding from the legislature. Thank you very much for allowing that to go forward. And then we also have our merit scholarships continue to be the largest award category. And you can see here on the pie chart that it takes up 45% of the current budget. So that's that. And you see the other programs there with the amounts and then the percentage of the total for each of them there around the pie chart. Now, moving on to federal financial aid. And this is really our big one, this federal financial aid is really important to a lot of students. It's very important. So we have, and this is in the fall semester, last semester, fall semester FANETSAHAN and semester 2021, federal PREP PEL grant is 3.1 million, serving 1,222 students. And we also have the federal direct loan program, also for the fall FANETSAHAN and semester, 1.6 million for 469 students. And compared to other institutions, we have relatively smaller number of students who take out loans. And then the loans they take out are also typically smaller than they are elsewhere in the country. And then we've also had considerable support, as you all know, from, from the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan distributions. And so this is fiscal year 20 up to the current fiscal year, 22 year to date. So over the whole period of the, of the pandemic, we've had $12.1 million processed through 14,616 individual grant awards. So students who were enrolled at the beginning of the pandemic and are still enrolled now will have five different payments over that period of time. So that's why it's, it's larger than the number of students is because some students are getting up to five different grants over that period of time. And so, and the money that's coming directly to students, so this is the higher education relief funds. The direct to student share is 8.6 million in direct student aid and need-based grant awards. So this is a mixture of awards that went to every student regardless of need. And then a group of students with particularly severe financial need had access to additional funds. That's 8.6 million that's come directly to students through our financial aid office. And then the institutional share, so the, the federal government divided the, the support for the, during the pandemic for students in one pack, package. And then to try to support institutions of higher education in another share. And so it's unusual for universities across the country to use any of their institutional share to transfer additional resources to students. The idea was that there was so much money coming to students that that would be sufficient and that the rest of that should be retained for the institution. Because we're concerned about so many of our students being faced with really severe economics situations in their families, thanks to the, to the pandemic recession, we use some of our institutional funds to provide additional support to students. So we've been rebating and reimbursing tuition and student fees. So there's a range of different student fees, labs and classes and so on. And addition, and we've also created additional student aid grants, particularly for students with demonstrated financial need. So that's 2.8 million from that category. In this semester, an additional 2.1 million from the remaining student share. So that's the direct to the students category. And another, another 1 million from the institutional portion will go directly to students. So just emphasize that, that, that that's been tremendously helpful during the pandemic and helping us all get through this. And the way that the university has been really focused on the UOG CARES initiative and the college affordability initiative to keep our students in, in school, coming, staying in school, finishing their degrees, that's what we've really been focused on. And oh, by the way, for this year, so for this current, the care, the UOG CARES emergency grant, for that emergency grant for students with financial need, we've received nearly 1,000 applications already for that. So just to indicate that this is, there are a lot of students in this category who need that help and are able to continue their education thanks to it. Then here's the HERF distributions, this is the Higher Education Relief Funds direct to students. So the direct grant aid, students attending UOG since March of 2020, the beginning of the pandemic, received up to $4,000 based on enrollment and Pell Grant status. So it was variable depending on your Pell Grant status. And you'll remember that the federal Pell Grant is, is related to financial need. So if you have a lot of financial need, then you get more Pell Grant up to the maximum. If you're in the between, then you can get a partial Pell Grant. And so that these were graduated based on that. And then one, sorry, 14,616 individual awards were processed over that two-year period. And then here again is the UOG CARES emergency grant. So this is our program providing 1.25 billion in need-based funding to 495 students. And as I say, their applications for second round of grants opened this month. And we have almost 1,000 applications already. Now moving on to the college affordability initiative. So our senior vice president and provost, Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez, has been leading the college affordability initiative. Actually, this started before the pandemic and it's been, we've been really focused on getting our students here, explaining how they can afford to complete their education, helping them to understand that the investment in higher education pays off over the lifetime. Typically, you know, an additional million dollars of earnings over your lifetime for someone who has a bachelor's degree over someone who just has a high school diploma. So tremendous benefit to individuals and to families and to communities for being able to complete higher education. And our message has been, we'll do everything we can to help you afford to complete your college education. So that's been the college affordability initiative. So it's been providing this information, developing innovative programs so that every student can afford to complete their education in a timely manner. So the financial aid training we've been providing have been integrated in the, this has been integrated into the FY 101, which is first year 101. So it's a course dedicated to helping students, you know, get adjusted to college, socialize to college, know what to do, how to afford it, how to study, all those kinds of things. The FY 101, so that's in there. And then we've been doing customer service surveys and they're being conducted now to improve experiences at the financial aid office. And then we also have this new Triton Advising Center funded through a Title III grant that we applied for and succeeded in getting from the US Department of Education. This is developing workshops, programs and resources to better inform and serve students. And so the, the real aim here is trying to get this kind of wraparound support for our students. And quite a high percentage of our students are the first in their families to go to college. And so as I point out, if you, if you come from a family with a lot of college graduates in it, you get a lot of college advice from your family, just sitting around the table at fiestas. You're getting, you know, you just throw out questions about ordinary things, social things, studying things, how do you decide on a major? How do you get an internship? Those kinds of things will be answered just in that kind of milieu. For students who come from families without that kind of experience, we have to mount this effort to provide them the, the wraparound support to help them with all those kinds of questions that they have about college, about how to afford it, about internships, about what to major in, you know, all those kinds of things. So the Triton Advising Center is really at the center of this effort to provide this wraparound experience for our students. And so we've also just done, the Triton Advising Center just finished a four-part financial aid webinar series and we had 150 participants in that. And we intend to keep that going. It's also available as a, as a recording. And then we are also adding a financial aid certification program later this year. And this will become part of the first year 101 course. So just to conclude this part of the presentation, it's, I think it's strange that this academic year, hundreds of our students are, are experiencing campus life for the very first time despite being sophomores and in some cases juniors. So we have sophomores and some juniors who have not been on campus, thanks to the pandemic. So it's a weird environment for them. And so the kind of socialization to campus life and, and how to behave and deal and be successful in face-to-face classes is all the new thing for so many of them. During a charter day planning meeting with our current Student Government Association President and Vice President, we learned that they had never been to a live in-person charter day, which everybody on this Zoom, I think we all know charter day is a big in-person thing. And yet we have leaders of our student government who have never been to one. So that's, that's, that's a big deal for, for us, a strange kind of environment that we're in. So our students really do need us to be innovative. They really need the wraparound support that I just described. And they really need individualized service and care to help them through not just the regular things about college, but especially what this pandemic has, has, has really kind of delivered to all of us. And so through strategies like the college affordability initiative, the Triton Advising Center and more, we will assure our students that none of them will be left behind in their pursuit of education and that we are committed to seeing them succeed, graduate and become valued contributors to our island. So with that, Madam Chair, I conclude that opening. I'm happy for questions and conversation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And can I have you please, at this time, introduce your team from the university who's with us today?
Yes, of course. Sorry about that. Yes, so I mentioned our senior vice president and provost, Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez is with us. Our vice president for administration and finance, Mr. Randy Wiegand is with us. Our vice provost for academic, academic excellence and dean of graduate studies, Dr. Charlene Santos Bamba is with us. The director of our global learning and engagement operation, Carlos Titano is with us. Our chief of staff and senior manager for board affairs, David Okada is with us. Let's see, we have going, we have the dean of the School of Health, Dr. Margaret Hattoria Uchima is with us. Mr. Mark Duarte, the director of our financial aid office is with us. It's Rachel Cuba Cub, our budget officer is with us. Going around, we have Dr. Lawrence Camacho, the dean of enrollment management and student success. And Dr. Annette Santos, the dean of the School of Business and Public Administration is with us. And Dr. James Selman, the dean of the College of Liberal Arts and Social Sciences is with us. I think I covered Ivana Rages is with us from the School of Health as well. And of course, Larry Rigatell is with us, who was here for the, for the confirmation hearing is with us. We hope our soon-to-be regent of the Board of Regents, Bernie Valencia is with us. Let's see, have I covered everybody?
I think so. Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Christ. And thank you to all of the UOG team who's here today to provide us with some updates. We're thankful for the time that you're taking to, to provide us with this information. I also want to congratulate the University of Guam, being the recipient of four Blue Pencil and Gold Screen Awards from the National Association of Government Communicators, winning first place awards for their COVID-19 livestream telethon and its economic impact report, as well as second place for the UOG CARES Initiative and the Parahulu Strategic Plan. So you know, this has been a very difficult time for everyone on island and the university as you've had to change and adapt to so many things and lots of challenges. And you've been able to still perform well and be recognized on a national level. So congratulations to all of you at the university who are making these strides for our students. I think we have a student here, Ivana Rages, who also wanted to provide testimony. And so I'll allow her to do that before we open the floor to my colleagues for any questions. Ivana, please state your name for the record.
Before I proceed, can everyone hear me? Thank you. Bonas en happy, thank you for allowing me to participate in this virtual public hearing. My name is Ivana Reyes and I am a graduating senior in the nursing program at the University of Guam. I have been a Regent Scholar since my freshman year in college. And currently I am under the Nursing Training Program Scholarship, which is part of the Student Financial Assistance Program at UOG. The School of Health Dean, Dr. Margaret, who is joining us today. Hi, Dr. Margaret. She encouraged me to speak on behalf of the nursing students and other students as well who are using scholarships as part of their financial needs. For me, after graduating high school, I had a part-time job and I continued working throughout college. Although my parents provided a roof on top of my head and something to eat, I was very much independent and I did not want to rely too much on my family to provide for me. I wanted to support myself as much as I can while helping my family in paying bills. This is the primary reason on why I continued working while I pursued my nursing degree. However, I had to seek out financial aid and scholarships that will further help me in my financial needs as I continue my education. I needed to go to pass my classes and maintain a high GPA to meet the requirements of being a Regent Scholar and recipient of the NTP Scholarship. As I progressed in my nursing education, I needed to focus more on my courses with increased rigor acquired. I had no choice but to work less at my part-time job. And the pandemic did not help much either, in which it affected the reduced hours on employees. Thus, when being asked, how does scholarships impact my education? I can confidently say that it definitely helped me to solely focus on my classes and to worry less about my financial needs and problems. So having financial aid and support from scholarships motivates students to move forward in their education and attain their college degree. College students are more likely to be mentally stable and academically perform well if they know they have financial support as they study for their college degree. Yes. And while they have to deal with a strain of increased prices with gas bills, food and more, this was actually studied in a research initiative conducted by House of Top 2019 with a sample of college students from a mid-sized public university in the Northeast of Pennsylvania. Indeed, from the strain of having financial distress while not going to college, there is a correlation with decreased academic performance, feeling less connected and supported by the college, and increased chance of dropping out of college or taking a break. I'm aware that I'm speaking for myself and the financial situation I am in. Several college students may or not, may or may not relate to my case. However, growing up from a large and low-income household and becoming a first-generation college student and soon to be graduate, I can wholeheartedly claim that any financial aid and scholarships provided by UOG and the local and/or federal government are greatly helpful and appreciated. My education is positively impacted by this and soon I will give back to the community with my service as I license registered ours. Thank you for your time to do this, Massey.
Thank you very much, Ivana, for your testimony and sharing with us how important the scholarships, the financial aid assistance from the University of Guam is to you. And we know that it is, that is a similar situation for many of our students, most of our students at the university. And we appreciate that perspective today. I'd like to open the floor now to my colleagues to ask any questions pertinent to today's agenda and based on the, the briefing that we just received. So we'll begin with Speaker Therese Terlachy.
Good morning and thank you for the presentation. If, Dr. Christ and all of those from UOG and Ivana, thank you also for your presentation. I'm particularly interested in, in the nursing scholarship, so I'm glad that you're here. And I saw in your testimony that you are a recipient of the nursing scholarship and also their, their Regent Scholarship. So we'll talk about that as well. So Dr. Christ, in your presentation, you gave us a pie chart of the student financial assistance programs. And I'm wondering if we could just, I'm trying now to scramble. We just got this to compare it to FY 21, or if you could compare it for us with FY 21, so we could get a better perspective. The one I know offhand is the PROTEC was zero and I think in FY 21, so now it's 450,000 according to your pie chart. Yeah. The, yeah, I haven't been able to compare the rest. Could you just talk maybe in detail about the health professions training? Is that about the same amount as, as last year or did it change?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll defer to Mark Duarte, who has the particulars on that. But yes, you're right that the, that you have funded the PROTEC from zero to that hot, much higher figures. So thank you very much for that. And we're taking applications now. So Mark, could you answer that question?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
And FY 21, and let me just open my budget here. For fiscal year 21, we did allocate 275,000 to the Health Profession Training Scholarship. And then currently, mine.
So currently it's, according to their pie chart, 383. Are those broken down in by nurses and social work?
No, it's, it's just one number. And yeah, it is an increase from, from last fiscal year because we are anticipating the additional social work applicants beginning in the spring 22 semester, this semester.
All right, yeah, I'd like to see those numbers, you know, so. Well, okay, so it's increased from 275 in FY 21 to 383,500 in FY 22. And yeah, so I'm wondering then the amount of people this affects. But all right, if you could also talk about the Yamashita Educator Corps?
Right, so previously, some changes were made to Yamashita Teacher Corps and where a student must be admitted to the School of Education before they can apply, similar to the nursing program. Additionally, you have to be in a high-needs area, which is dictated by GDOE. Every year they have a high-needs listing. So we take a look at the high-needs list and we admit students to the Yamashita Teacher Corps based on their high-needs list. So in 2020, 21, it was math, science was the high-needs area. And then for 21, 22, they have an addition, special ed as one of the high-needs areas. So one of the things that we're doing for this semester, spring 22, is an informational meeting with the School of Education for students who are interested in going into those fields so that they could apply for the Yamashita Teacher Corps in addition to a federal program called Teach Grant, which also uses the same high-needs priority as published by GDOE. So those two combined will, in essence, the Yamashita Teacher Corps will pay for the full tuition and fees per student. And then the federal Teach Grant gives it additional $2,000 per semester to the student. So the student then would have all their fees and their tuition paid for. Then you would get, if the student so chooses, also apply for the federal program and get that additional $2,000 for the semester for other educational needs.
All right, so, but that's only for those teachers who want to go into the areas of math, science or special ed for now.
Right, and I think there's an addition in the latest listing of the Ojomoa Language Instruction.
All right, are you aware, I mean, I'm not sure, are you aware that whether these high-needs area matches really the vacancies at DOE?
The listing comes directly from GDOE and you have to submit the list to, it's called the Teacher Shortage Areas Listing. They submit it to USDAOE and that's the same list that we use as well.
All right, thank you. And how many are you funding right now? How, how many are in this program?
Currently, we have, I believe, 13. And the reason why, again, is from this, from the change in the Yamashita Teacher Corps, we no longer accept freshman students. And we have experienced a high and we have experienced a high default rate with students being accepted in the freshman year but couldn't move forward after their sophomore year, either they couldn't pass the practices so they defaulted or they switched majors. So by changing the rules so to make it more like a nursing program where they have to be accepted today into the school bed, that also reduced the number of applicants that would receive. In addition to that, we also had to look at high-needs areas. A majority of those students who were applying for the Yamashita Teacher Corps were in areas such as elementary education, which GDOE was telling us was not high need. And in some cases, you had graduates who couldn't be employed by DOE as they already had enough elementary ed students. And then the issue becomes, oh, we don't have enough majors who are going into those high-needs areas, especially science and math. So that was been the challenge getting those applicants.
All right, okay. What are the, what, how many are being funded under the Health Professionals with the 383,000 for one semester, right? So this number is for the entire year and so for this semester, how many are you funding?
We've, let me see.
That would be nurses only or nurses and social work?
Apparently it's just nurses, but in the spring, this semester, we're opening up to social work as well. So we expect to expand all of those ones by the end of the fiscal year. So right now, we have, in the fall, we awarded 13 Nursing Training Program Scholarships.
All right. Okay, thank you. And the Pro-Tech, what are the, what are the areas or the fields that are being, that were listed on the priority this versus what is being funded in this Pro-Tech this year?
Yeah, so when we received the additional 500,000 for the fiscal year 22 by the Board of Regents in their November meeting, we looked at a new priority listing and we have refined the listing to mostly fields in healthcare. So all medical fields and I don't have the exact list with me, but it's all in the medical area. Advanced nursing degrees, clinical psychology, and in all fields in medicine.
All right. Yeah, if we could get it, I'd like to see a detailed list of, you know, exactly what fields that
Yes.
this year. And when you said that you've finessed the priority list, is that, was that, I know you guys have, you're supposed to have a public hearing, establish a list, and then it goes through the Board of Regents and are you saying they, they finessed that list or what happened?
So in the listing that we've had, it had over maybe 25 areas, which includes the medical field. But in this November meeting, it was just reduced to just the medical field areas because of the limited funding that we received. Now, the 500,000 in addition, of course, has to be shared between the nursing training program, the social work program and the Pro-Tech. So we prioritize just in the medical field in that priority list.
Okay, and so, but the priority listing, just one more time, it comes from a public hearing that UOG holds or it comes from the Board of Regents meeting?
It comes from the Board of Regents in where they make a determination. But of course, after administration picks it up and recommends it.
All right, so there are no public hearing on that priority list anymore?
Not, not for this latest.
Okay. All right. All right, well, I'm glad to see that, that, you know, some of these scholarships have increased. If I could just ask back to the nursing, the last time when we talked about the nurse scholarships, they said no sophomores were being covered, no social work at that time, no health science majors, no masters in clinical psychology. Or are those, are those addressed now? I know the social work not yet, but the nurse sophomores?
If advanced, like a master's program would then be addressed by the Pro-Tech.
Pro-Tech.
Nursing training program is basically just the bachelor's level.
All right. And did it expand or did it stay the same, the nursing, because they weren't covering the sophomores at that time? I saw Dr. Fratore here as well. Were we able to attract or recruit more students?
With the additional funds, then we would expand beyond junior and senior nursing students.
All right. And so you did that this semester?
We're opening the application this semester and we'll hold information sessions with nursing students. Also, of course, the Yamashita Teacher Corps and Pro-Tech.
Okay.
So all these programs will have these information sessions.
All right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know there's others waiting. I'll pass for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker. We'll move on now to Senator Joanne Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I really don't have any questions. I appreciate the the presentation and certainly the outreach work University of Guam is doing to maximize the opportunity to get scholarships out to as many students as possible. Certainly, the testimony of Mrs. Rajus in terms of her experience. I myself, having been a merit scholarship student at the university, certainly was very fortunate to have my education paid for by the people of Guam and I think it had a lot to do also with my desire for public service and wanting to contribute back. So I think it's a positive benefit for the university and being able to increase their student enrollment and keep students actively engaged to work on their degrees. And at the same time, it certainly provides a student base for the university to operate with. So I don't have any questions. I appreciate Dr. Christ and the presentation's been made this morning and thank you for keeping us in the public informed on the work and the outreach you're doing with your scholarship programs. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Sabina Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Dr. Christ for that presentation on updating us on the scholarships as well as COVID protocols. I think it's, it's so important that I commend you for the work in, you know, preventing the spread of the disease on campus. So yeah, keep that up. In regards to the scholarships, I do have a question for Mark or anyone here on the panel that can answer. So yeah, so I'm very, I've been one of the proponents and Senator Duane has brought that up earlier that, you know, I've been one of the proponents of pre-apprenticeships in high schools. And I know Dr. Akada at GCC, she has her satellite programs within the schools, you know, addressing various trades. And, you know, considering that, you know, Guam, you know, the Department of Education, there's a shortage of teachers pretty regularly, about 300 consistently. And they've been, they've been only able to fill that, those positions usually by retirees. So I guess, you know, in regards to the Yamashita Corps, you know, I appreciate the information that you're providing, Mr. Duarte, about that you're, you're making it more rigorous as far as who can receive these, these grants. But, you know, is there an attempt to perhaps develop more satellites within the schools to promote these careers or professions that we have shortages, you know, including, you know, nursing as well as teachers and others? You know, I understand too that that was when we last left off in the conversations, the last budget cycle, you're also talking about the efforts that you're making in regards to ensuring that students are applying on time for these, for these grants. And maybe you can provide some feedback on these issues. I appreciate that.
Could I, thank you, Senator. Could I just say that we do have a number of programs with, particularly with TEES in high school, but we have some others. Maybe shall I refer this to Dr. Enriquez and then maybe to Mark since I think this touches on a bunch of different issues?
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. This obviously would be a new initiative, an early pipeline initiative at that. And certainly looking at the opportunity to partner with GDOE schools, particularly the high schools. What we attempted with Teach and High is to take advantage of existing teachers who have been approved as adjunct instructors, for example, in English composition and to have the composition courses be held onsite on their campus, taught by our approved adjunct instructor who happens to be a GDOE teacher. And so the cohort numbers average roughly about 20 to 25, but you can imagine if the, if one of our goals is to develop an early pipeline for teachers within the STEM fields, particularly mathematics and the sciences, then that could very well be developed using the model that we had employed at Teach and High, recognizing that all of these need resources and to be as resourceful and certainly innovative as we possibly can. We don't have the, 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 gosh, the the funding source that currently exists of that is provided by GCC to have their particular satellite locations and programs. Theirs is a lot more robust. We would have to actually create something and use a more resourceful model in order to sustain something like that. But I appreciate the suggestion, Senator Perez. I see that as a wonderful opportunity, certainly and something that we could expand. So to Doos Mossy for that recommendation.
To Doos Mossy for your response. And in fact, I wasn't aware of the TEES in program. So that's great to hear that you're already, you know, moving in that direction. And we do look, I do look forward to seeing, finding more funding. I think it's really important that we're able to diversify, you know, the educational offerings within the high schools and to really, like you said, create this pipeline. I guess another question that I had in regards to, you know, I really appreciate the comments by Ivana and I think, you know, it's really important that, you know, students, they have enough funding to really commit their time to education rather than having to, you know, divert their, their attention to other things. And I know Guam is so family-oriented and a lot of times I've seen this happen where, you know, students, they, they give up their education because they're, they're busy taking care of the family. And so, you know, it really creates this, this struggle. And so anything that you can do to ensure that, you know, you know, funding is provided, is greatly appreciated to these students and yeah, I do appreciate that. And just maybe if you can talk about, you know, how much have you staved off? Because I imagine that there might have been a drop in enrollment. But the effect of these, these scholarships, to what extent have they staved off a loss of a student, student enrollment?
Thank you, Senator, for that. And I'll field that maybe to Dr. Lawrence Camacho on the enrollment front. But nationally, we've, the country is down about a million students thanks to the pandemic and kind of the gloom that the Omicron surge has sort of swept over everybody. So we're feeling that some of that as well here. And that the financial aid is really critically important to all of our students. 61% of our students are Pell-eligible, which is an indication of relative financial need. So I mean, that just gives you a clue about how important financial aid is. So anyway, so maybe I can refer to Dr. Lawrence Camacho to remark on the enrollment.
Yes, sir. So within the last two years of our pandemic experiencing the downfall in enrollment, really, you know, we, in the first year, we were, we remained flat. We sort of started now noticing even a deeper decline. So this particular semester compared to last year, we're below 7%, lower than 7% from where we were last year. So in effort to kind of curb that back up, knowing that there were hundreds of students that did not return from the fall semester, from the Fanta Chana and trying to figure what's coming, you know, what's causing them to not register. We also look deeper into who is financially burdened, if you will. So we have a listing of that and we worked, my office works closely, I personally work closely with the bursar's office to figure ways, creative ways to kind of relieve the pressure on those students with financial holes. So we can contact them and encourage them to register and think we were very successful in, you know, gaining back a few hundred of those folks that were in the category towards the registration season, if you will. We are in the midst of penetrating through various different creative ways. One way to kind of get back your enrollment, if you will, for the Fanta Chana semester is the recognition of how we could preemptively or go forward in advance or momentum when it comes to informing the students in the high schools, currently in the high schools now, having gone through two years of pandemic and maybe the strain on that and then maybe them thinking they're not ready for college based on the, the kind of learning experience that they've had in decline during the pandemic. So we're coming up with a program and we will be launching this in the next month or so. Excuse me, going all the way into the summer season where we are going to be engaging with a lot of high school students. We are doing a lot of that right now with some of the programs that we currently have with Summer Bridge, the, you know, the upper bound type programs, preparing students, right, college readiness, if you will. But we're looking at synergizing that and then increasing the efforts on how to get those students to think about going to college and specifically coming to the universities. That's one area. The other area we're trying to penetrate deeper into is the military market. I am working right now with the commander of the recruiting command out of the Guam National Guard as directed by our administration to kind of figure out ways and creatively work with the National Guard in their recruitment process. We're looking at, looking at the soldier from a whole person concept, if you will, in three different buckets. The military career path of that soldier and the progression of that soldier. The civilian career path and the progression and professionalizing that soldier for the civilian world. And then the education piece. The education piece is where we come in critically because there are financial assistance that come out of the, you know, the soldier, if you will, through the GI Bill, through the Go Army Ignite, Ignited Program. So what we've done here is in preparation and to kind of refine how we do business and capturing that market full force is developing a new office, if you will, we're dedicating individuals to specifically look in that market and make sure that we're providing the best services. That is another way of generating revenue, if you will, from outside, from an outside source, and that's through the federal. We've seen models at other universities where they're very focused on that and they're gaining a lot of momentum when it comes to that market and how we can get the financial assistance from, from another area to provide. And it's just a wonderful thing to watch and see, having a, you know, being a former military person myself, a retiree, I'm really kind of dedicated to that as well and getting our folks here in Guam to wear the uniform in service and same time trying to prepare them through our university.
Thank you, Lawrence. Could I just chime in to say that I had a conversation with some military advisor people who were saying that our use of the GI Bill by our veterans in Guam is low. So we're not, we have a lot of people who are eligible for the GI Bill who aren't tapping into that benefit. So this is, this, the Dr. Camacho's efforts are trying to sort of tap into that for their benefit and for, for attracting more, more students to the university. And then EMSS has also been awarded a second year as a military-friendly. The campus has been given a military-friendly status with a bronze award from the organization that provides that. So lots of effort on trying to work on the military and the veteran community.
Okay, great. Thank you for those responses. I have no further questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Perez. Senator Tai Tukui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you everyone for the presentation. Jonas, thank you for posting it on the chat. I like to, I was taking pictures, you know, trying to get the numbers right. But it's very helpful when we have the presentation in front of us so we can review the numbers. Um, you know, I was looking at the budget that was provided. You know, I was looking at the budget that was provided to the university on FY21. It was about three million sixty-eight, I think. And then in FY22, it was three million five hundred sixty-five. But I'm noticing on, on your presentation, it was, you're saying in FY22, there was four million that was provided. I think it's probably close to that. And then I noticed where on the merit scholarships, you know, the, the one thing that was mentioned that on the tail end of the sentence and grow every year. You understand that this is, this is the reason why the budget needs to be increased, you know? In fact, I was hoping that my bill would pass Mr. Kreitz, giving UOG six point six million dollars for scholarships. But unfortunately, the EITC funding went, went somewhere else. So I'm sorry about that. We definitely did try and doesn't mean that we can't continue to try and provide much needed resources to our community for education. However, the, the numbers that I'm looking here and I'm trying to divide into what you provided us is showing about an average of about two thousand dollars per student in every category, from the regional scholarships to private scholarships. So I have a question with the nursing. What is the average tuition for a nurse? I saw Margaret Hattori, who's here. What is the average tuition for a first year nurse going into nursing school? What is that? How much is that? Yeah, thank you.
Actually, I'm so sorry. You don't have that number on me, but I know either Rachel or Mark have it.
Okay.
But however, the first year will be the same as a regular UOG student. It won't be till their sophomore year that, that would, that would change. But keep in mind, our tuition rate is the same for nursing students as it is for, for other students.
Okay, thank you. Can you answer that question? What is the tuition cost for the first year and second?
So just doing a simple calculation, using twelve credits as full-time for one year, including fees, and that should be about six thousand one oh seven. That doesn't include books. I'm just looking strictly at tuition fees for a student taking twelve credits per semester, Fana Chanan and Fana Yumnokan.
Thank you, Mark. And Mark, when a nurse goes into the third year into nursing school, what is the cost of that, the tuition?
So it's the same, tuition is the same, but they may have additional requirements such as, and we know that textbooks for nursing students are usually much more expensive than in other majors. So while the tuition and fees stay the same for all students, the cost for, as a nursing students may be much higher than, than a regular UOG student. And I think, Dr. Tori, you can comment on all the other expenses that they may have in addition to just tuition and fees at, at the junior level and above.
Right. Thanks. Thanks, Mark. Yes, at the, actually, beginning with the sophomore level, when they start going to practicum, the, each hospital and healthcare agency has different requirements that the students have to meet, and those requirements have increased since COVID. So that would include police clearance, court clearance, physical exam, some require urine drug screening, COVID testing. However, that COVID testing is being covered by CARES funds right now. And then CPR as well as uniforms. So those are all added costs. And we, in the past, we've used our take care qualifying certificate, which had been a hundred thousand a year, and that sometimes was helping. But this year, you know, our take care ended. Oh, and I apologize, sorry, take care never covered the police and court clearances. We did use it to cover some things like their NCLEX study preparation. But we did recently apply for a HERSA grant, our AHEC grant through UH to ask if it could cover police and court clearance, urine drug screening and, and all of those things. But yes, that's a definitely an added cost for the students that's not covered in through UOG funding at the current time.
Okay, thank you for that. So I'm looking about, only about thirty-five percent is offered in grants or scholarships to students. You're looking at about only two thousand, an average of two thousand dollars per student. Is that a, you know, just doing the math on that, is that a norm to only provide that amount of money? A percentage of thirty-five percent of their tuition? I guess I could go to Mark on this. Do you try to stay within a certain percentage on tuition?
Senator, for, at least for the nursing training program, the program does pay for your entire tuition and fees. So if, if the nursing student is taking twelve, then we would cover twelve. If somehow they take twenty-one credits, the program will cover twenty-one credits. So it covers tuition and fees. There is a book stipend and there's a monthly stipend. So it's not necessarily two thousand, but it could be more depending on how many credits the students take.
Thank you, Mark. And Mark, in that location on the pie chart, that is under the health profession training of three hundred eighty-three point five, is that where that money is coming from in this aid?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. And of, of that amount, how many students are you, nursing students, are you able to assist with that amount of money?
Currently, in the fall, we awarded thirteen students. But we do intend to open the application again this semester. So we should see additional students, both in the nursing and in social work. And I'm sure by the end of the fiscal year, that those entire funds will be expended.
Okay, so, so far right now, with the three hundred eighty-three thousand, you're, you're able to fund full-time twelve credits for these students, only thirteen. Is that correct?
Currently, we have thirteen, which total award in fall twenty-one was about forty-one thousand two eighty-eight.
I guess what I'm getting here is, you know, this amount of money, how many students with UOG be able to fund for their tuition, their full tuition, you know, for a full year? So.
Normally, Senator, when we have, I think at one point, we had twenty, up to twenty-six, twenty-seven students in a nursing program, which we successfully did fund. And I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Tori, is there is a limit to the number of nursing students that is can be in the program due to limits such as capacity. Is that correct?
Well, well, we, we cut back last year because of COVID, but we actually increased and admitted thirty-eight new sophomores. So if we, you know, if we expanded and offer it to the sophomores, of course, that number will go up. Because in the past, we've only provided it for juniors and seniors. So that, that number should go up.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Tori, and thank you, Mark, for those numbers, just doing the math. It prepares us as we go into the budget bill for FY twenty-three on really the needs, you know, the areas in need. And I think health professions, and now you're including social workers as well. So those numbers are going to go up in that category. So really appreciate your time and all the hard work you're doing at the University of Guam. Thank you, Dr. Kreitz.
Thank you very much, Senator Tai Tukui. We'll go back to Speaker Turla. He shares one more question for the panel.
Thank you. And I'm so glad that some of the Board of Regents have stayed on the Zoom and especially Bernie. Thank you. I know you're, you're not even confirmed yet, but I'm very glad to see you here because I think it's important. You know, we talked earlier about how to run UOG like a business, make it, you know, efficient that way and, and meet its financial obligations. But really, I think when the university was founded, you know, the business model was not at all the goal. The goal was, of course, we had needs in our community that we have to fill, and that has to be our priority. We have to keep our university relevant and we have to keep it focused on how to help the community, I hope, and the region. And, and in order to do that, I think we found that our students are unable to really afford the university at this point. We have to try our best to keep tuition increases down. I mean, it has to be a goal. It really does, I think, if we're going to keep them in. I taught for a while and I was amazed that at almost, I would say ninety-nine percent of my students taught. And maybe, I mean, sorry, ninety-nine percent of my students worked while they were attending the university. And, you know, I'm sure they've got real statistics for you, but those were just my, my impressions from my students. And a lot of them also had families, like they, they were mothers themselves or fathers themselves. And I was pretty surprised by that as well. So they are dealing with many things. But yeah, so I'm just hoping tuition, keeping that tuition down has to be a goal. And I know, you know, you know how to do that through an organization. We keep the expenses down, the costs however we can. These scholarships are another way, another outright budget that we put in to help these students. And so, you know, so last year, we talked about prioritizing the scholarship money towards the fields that really need them. And, you know, we also gave, we, UOG also receives money from our H two B visa fees. They receive a portion of that and it's for training. We were supposed to expand the training, right, for those fields that are in high need in Guam. And we haven't talked about that today, but I would like to follow up with that later. So but, but for today, I just wanted to talk about the region scholarships. So, you know, we talked about this during budget and we put our money, well, we put our, our appropriation for the other scholarships that were mandated in statute. And all the other discretionary scholarships that are given out by the Board of Regents are not necessarily mandated in statute. They weren't recognized as, you know, fulfilling the high need. However, we do understand that there are a large number of students that avail of these scholarships. And if you could just, if, if the president or Mr. Dwork, if you could just talk about, you know, they had sent a letter out withdrawing the region scholarship funding for the students. And then I'm glad to hear now that they've, the students have been assured that they will receive their region scholarship for this, for how long? I mean, how, how long is this assurance for these students?
Speaker, and I'll have probably Mark answer that, but I just wanted to remark on the efficiency of the university. And so you'll remember that we went through the good to great exercise in the middle of the past decade and cut a lot of our programs and really consolidated a lot. And so that was kind of the big push to be a much more efficient institution. And then thanks to the legislature for passing the UOG as a Twenty-First Century University Bill, which included the ability to do some public-private partnerships. So we have an effort with Siemens International right now. That'll be our first one under that law that will allow us to be much more efficient in energy as well as supporting our island sustainability program and save us money in the long term. And so we also are thinking, we're working on a project for a public-private partnership to add dormitory spaces, which would allow us to bring in more students from the region and even perhaps from East Asia to support, you know, those students can help support their fellow students. So we've done a lot of that. We also have seventy vacancies in the university now, including eighteen faculty positions. So that's, that's what we do when we're, when we're constrained, is we just don't hire people. And so that leads to problems with students being able to get the courses they want to finish on time. And so that has an effect on, on this. So we've done a lot to, to be as efficient in a university as you'll find. And, you know, so it's, we're really, really tight and we're really dependent on the financial aid. And we're, of course, very dependent on your appropriation for the university to make it all work. And then we did the, there was an earlier conversation about the, or mention of the Economic Impact Report, which shows that what every dollar you put into the university returns you three dollars in additional tax revenue. So the investment in the university is a moneymaker for the government of Guam. It's a moneymaker for the economy of Guam. It's three hundred and seventy million dollars in economic impact, positive economic impact on, on the, on Guam and the region. So just to emphasize all that, on the region scholarship, I think Mark might be the best one to comment on that.
Thank you. Just in the history of the region scholarship and why we sent out this notice to the students, you know, it was a lesson learned from the issue we had with the merit scholarship where students complained that they did not receive notice early enough of a proposed change at the time when we took the students' Pell Grant first before awarding merit. So when we, when the bill, the budget bill was passed and we saw that provision, we wanted to send a notice to the students to just prepare. And we gave them alternatives to the region scholarship in case we, we couldn't fund it. But looking at the law again, we saw that there was a provision that said multi-year awards were not affected by the, the law. So we looked at region scholarships and region scholarship basically is a multi-year award. You are become eligible by two semesters of a certain GPA and you be, and you remain eligible until perhaps you don't attend classes for one semester or your GPA falls below a certain GPA. So as you progress in the university, as long as you keep that GPA high enough and you've been named a merit scholarship, then you will continue receiving those funds. What happens is if a student then, after the budget bill was passed, any new region student identified in the Fana Yumnokan twenty-two semester or spring twenty-two semester, if we choose to fund them, we would have to fund them out of the university appropriation as outlined in the budget bill. So we are still, after looking at certification enrollment and certification of grades, we are still going through the process then of identifying how many new region scholarships are, will be named in Fana Yumnokan twenty-two. And then looking at those numbers, if we choose to fund them, then those would have to be funded from the university appropriation. But in fall twenty-one or Fana Chanan twenty-one, we did fund those region scholars because they were region, or they were identified prior to the passage of the bill and they were existing region scholars.
All right, great. And they will, they will then be, their scholarships will continue as long as they are eligible, correct? For, for the rest of their student enrollment or their career, I guess, in, in UOG. Okay, that's good to know. And that's exactly what I remember the discussion was on the floor with Senator Shelton. Yeah, that we were, we wanted to ensure that those who had scholarships are not affected. And we also gave other, you know, leeway for the university to, to make up for that. You know, to, to direct if it, if the Board of Regents wants to grant these scholarships to, to, you know, to give it flexibility to do that. And can I just ask one more question, Madam Chair, if you don't mind? When they talked about the H E E R F, there was a slide on that, Mr. Kreitz, President Kreitz. That's, this is federal money that you received. And so there was a portion for student share and then a portion for institutional share. And that you said that over and above those mandated proportions, that you took one million from the institutional share to go directly to students. What is the rest of the money being used for? What is the rest of the institutional share being used for?
Yes, Madam Speaker, a good question. So the, it's, it's more than a million. That's, it's an additional million. So Mark might be able to correct that. I think it's, it's over two million, right, that we've contributed from the institutional share? So the big use, yep, yes, thank you. So the, the big use of the institutional share has been for all of the COVID mitigation kinds of things. So that goes to air purification, all of the equipment that we've used. We've done a lot with online education and training of our faculty and staff, upgrading our IT capacity, providing green zones and Wi-Fi zones for students to use during the various lockdown periods and so on. So that's been the main use of those, of those facilities. So that's been the main use of those, of those facilities. And then we, of course, use some of that money, as we say, for the rebating fees and that kind of thing. So trying to keep our students in and then trying to provide the kind of connection that we can to students so that we can keep up the online or hybrid education that we've been doing. Air purification machines, those kinds of things, improving ventilation.
All right, okay, I'm really sorry. One more question, just can you, can you tell us, when will, when will you announce what scholarships will be available, including region scholarships for new, you know, new recipients? If they will and when they will be available? And when will we know the outcome of, like, the current application process for, like, nursing scholarships and teacher scholarships? When will we know how many of those were given out?
I think either Mark or Lawrence might be able to handle that.
For the ProTAC, we've given them, February twenty-fifth, I believe, is the deadline to apply. We normally do the application to begin the award in the fall, or Fanyam Nakken. But because we had that additional five hundred thousand, so we tried to do the application period earlier, which would be this semester in the spring. So we should know by the end of February how many additional folks we'll have under nursing, under YTC, under ProTAC for this fiscal year and for this academic year.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
If you don't mind, sir, I'm just going to add to that for one, because since we're in the sentiment for how do we inform students about all these various opportunities, and Senior Vice President Anita and I were, been in lots of discussion here in just how well we can leverage off of the Strait Titan Inviting Center that was alluded to by President Christ earlier in the presentation. Now, talking about infusing financial aid classes in FY one oh one, that reaches, we've reached close to a thousand students just off of that initiative. And we're going to be reaching four hundred from almost every semester when we have FY one oh one to inform them on all the opportunities for scholarships and all that. That's in addition to the webinar that we've started doing. We're going to do that periodically on just inviting students to come and listen and know the financial aid one oh one type of lessons that need to be learned about in that webinar and all the different opportunities for scholarship and ways to finance their education here. We have financial aid videos that were put together, we're developing, to promote with different languages so that we can continue to entice those that are from other islands and those that are currently here as students to understand really the very complex process of the federal financial aid. So we can leverage more financial aid from the federal side. The College Affordability Initiative, as mentioned already, one hundred and fifty participants. We're, we're reaching two hundred, two hundred students to fifty parents when we have or engaging opportunities with new students coming onboard through the Trio Program and the College Readiness. So we're really kind of informing students better, we're getting better at informing students about these financial aid opportunities. Five hundred students, we anticipate, will begin by the end of this, going into the Fanyam Nakken semester this year, when we finish our certification program for financial literacy. When we introduce this in FY one oh one and throughout the various grade levels of our college students here to take part in, in a, not a curriculum, but in a program for them to get certified when it comes to financial literacy. Again, how to stretch that dollar, but at the same time, how to find ways to afford their education here. This, and by the end of the semester, I was telling our Senior Vice President that by the end of semester, every student will have been advised through a letter on where they stand. If they apply for federal financial aid, they would understand how much they perhaps were awarded, but they didn't pick up. Or how much they would have been eligible for, but they just did not get awarded because they didn't finish the financial aid process or the fast for application process. Those are the initiatives. Next week, we're going to start talking to the at-risk students. These are the various students who perhaps did not come back to register the spring semester because they had financial holds. We're going to educate, again, really kind of get on a one-on-one and most intrusive type way to advise them and really kind of get them back up in the spring so that all those distractions from their academic, I think, could be relieved of that from these initiatives that we have going on.
Thank you, Lawrence. And if I could, if you wouldn't mind, my having Anita Enriquez comment a little bit on that and the, also the other use of the institutional share?
Thank you. Yes, so the university has been on this journey, you know, the spirit of care we call Inadahhi. And there are a lot of efforts that have been ongoing in trying to ensure that we build upon our student success. And student success is defined, according to the W.A.S. Senior College and University Commission, on strengthen student retention, strengthen degree completion, and strengthen high academic achievement. So the University of Guam since 2016, okay, and as the Accreditation Liaison Officer to the W.A.S. Senior Commission, we are intent on not leaving any student behind. We care about our students. We care about the success of the institution to transform lives and advance our communities. So this Inadahhi spirit of care, this College Affordability Initiative, this leveraging as much of the federal CARES and HERB dollars as possible, using up to almost three million dollars out of the institutional portion to which we've already directed towards ensuring the continuity of our academic operations. That is, you have employees who've had to pivot with no equipment to operate remotely. They have to be equipped. Faculty, full-time, part-time adjunct instructors even, needed the resources, not having the virtual platforms, being forced to continue teaching our students, using the virtual platforms, using the new technologies, strengthening the infrastructure, the IT infrastructure of our campus, and making sure that we put in processes for the continuity of operations to sustain our institution. We have surveyed our students. We have surveyed our faculty on a regular basis. When the students did not return on a spring semester, at the start of semester, we always want to know why. So we sent out a poll survey to find out. And sure, financial challenges are one of the reasons, but more, you know, more recently, it's not just that. They're tired. They're tired of the circumstances that the COVID nineteen has placed on their immediate families and their workspaces. And it's, they said, no, even if you give us money, we're just tired. We want to take a break. And we certainly understand the conditions that they are faced with. And so the university has been given this opportunity to just leverage as much of these federal dollars. And so we do it to support not just our students, but also the core of the academy, the faculty, some of whom are still afraid to come back because of, you know, medical reasons. But we do everything we can to make those accommodations to the faculty, to our employees, to our students. And so the institutional portion, the balance, hey, we've, you know, we've gone down over twelve percentage in terms of enrollment count since 2020, roughly six point three, six point five percent each academic year since spring of 2020. So with that, how are we going to make ends meet? The appropriations given to us, the forecasted tuition revenues, I mean, we're working at a deficit. So how do we balance it all out? So we take a look at the portfolio of cards that have been dealt with to us with regard to SFAF funding. How do we reprioritize those? How do we leverage Pell Grants before people are actually given their awards? So that we have a better balanced portfolio of students. And yes, people are hurting financially, but not all of our students are eligible for these scholarships currently funded under the SFAF budget. The private scholarships are never going to be enough. We cannot give full subsidy to every single student. It's impossible. So what do we do? We do what we can, and we keep doing. And so we greatly appreciate the partnership of members of our Guam Legislature. And we appreciate all the efforts that have been done thus far by our university community. And we certainly are very grateful to our, the support of our donors. But by golly, our institution is doing what we can. Can we reinvent ourselves? We certainly can. But we are all going through this global pandemic together. And so we ask that you please be patient with us as we do the very best in the spirit of Inadahhi to do everything we can to not leave any of our students behind. So the slides really give a picture of where we are. It is still a moving target with some of these CARES funds. The university has lost a lot of tuition revenue. We want to see what we can do to recover those under the CARES funds because tuition just makes up roughly a third of what we need to operate the core of our academic business. And it's not enough. So we do what we can. We leverage what we can. We're looking for that balanced portfolio, and we greatly appreciate all the support from our senators on this call and certainly the senators in the company make it. So, Mr. President, do you want to close out, Sadhus Mossi?
Thank you, Dr. Enriquez. Thank you to Lawrence, too, for your presentation. I'm not sure if that's all the questions, but I should send it back to Madam Chair if there are other questions for us before we close out.
That's it for us. Thank you very much, Dr. Christ, for your time today, and to the whole team at the University of Guam for the information that you've presented to us today, especially to Miss Rages, our student who came to testify on the benefits of the Student Financial Aid Program that we have at the University of Guam. And I think this really helped to us to build the, build all of the information that we need in anticipation of the budget hearing to come very soon. I'm sure the Budget Chair will call for them and for us to receive these regular updates from the University of Guam to help us understand how we can help support the university. And so we are grateful for the information, and we look forward to working closely with all of you to ensure that UOG has the resources that you need, the best that we can provide from here in the legislature to allow you the flexibility and to do what is the best for the students, to ensure student success. And I'm sure, certain that us working together, continuing this partnership, this collaboration, that we can find a very productive way forward. So thank you very much for today. The time now is twelve forty-four PM, and this informational hearing is adjourned. Sadhus Mossi, everyone, and stay safe. Thank you.
Sadhus Mossi.
Thank you.